Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Present.
Commissioner McTeen?
Here.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Here.
Mayor Hill?
Here. Pastor Adams?
Good evening. Let's pray. Father in heaven, it's such a privilege to be here in this room. I thank you for the freedom that allows us to meet here, to discuss, to talk, to choose, to make decisions. Father, I thank you for the people that line these walls all around us right now. I thank you for their faithfulness. I thank you for their love for this city. God, I thank you for their wisdom. I thank you for how you've used them and how you long to use them. Father, we pray tonight that you would just give them wisdom, give them leadership, give them courage to make right decisions, no matter how difficult or how hard they are, Father God. Father, we look to you and we just say thank you for this great city. Father, we look to you right now and we ask for wisdom and we pray, Lord, especially not just in our city, but, God, around this nation, some of the things that are going on. Father, we need you. Lord, there is division, there's dissension. Father, we just pray, God, we need you. We pray that you, that your presence would profoundly show up in a divine way in our city, in our state, and in our nation. Lord, we need you now and we proclaim that together in this room. We need you, Lord. Father, I thank you. Bless this meeting tonight, God. We ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. I'm going to ask the representatives from the Naval Junior Reserve Officers Training Corps from Zion Benton High School, and there are representatives from the local scout troop. I'm going to ask them to come up and lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four is agenda changes. Do the commissioners have any agenda changes? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
You have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number five is citizens' comments. First on the list is Mr. Clyde McLemore from Zion.
Good evening, council members and mayor. You know, I said in the last meeting, I stepped out to go get y'all stuff, y'all order for our fundraiser, and I missed being able to address the council last meeting. So I had to wait another two weeks, and within that two weeks, let's go back. I was pretty upset because we've had a shooting, we've had a stabbing, we had a lady whose house caught on fire that was sent to a hotel. If it wasn't from Commissioner McDowell, I give you props. The mayor answered his phone. He was out of the country. Thank you, sir. He answered his phone while he was out of the country. He said, Clyde, ain't nothing I could do in a situation with a lady with three kids, single mother, house caught on fire. The house was by the city, raided, unlivable. She took her money and went to a motel. She ran out of money. It was ninety-seven degrees. She back in her house with no running water and no electricity at ninety-seven degrees with three children, nine, ten, and eleven. I contacted Commissioner McDowell, and I thank you, sir. I thank you. He stepped up, and that was the day of the stabbing. But we come to this council meeting, we hear nothing about it. Now, two weeks later, last night, I come home from the Waukegan City Council, and we had a lady, a visitor to our city. Had we been warned to know to do a lookout, which I do do, you know what I'm saying? But we need to get pressing a little bit more because we got the cancer treatment center here. We got visitors coming into this city, and we want our, first of all, we want our residents to feel safe, then we want our visitors to feel safe. If there's something that I could do to help you in that area, I'm willing to do that, man, because I don't like that. I got three boys I'm trying to raise in this city, and I don't like that when our visitors get hurt here. I want to invite y'all to, I talked to you about it, you already let me know you're going to be busy. Lake County Chapter of Black Lives Matter present a Black and Blue Relationship Community Forum on Black Men and Women. Somebody told me, Black Men and Women and the police. This will be Thursday, August 18th, from 6:00 to 7:30. We did the first one here in Waukegan, I mean, in Zion. It was great. We had a great turnout, some good dialogue. We asked that the police come, but we ask y'all to leave y'all firearms at the door because this is a peaceful meeting. A lot of people here, I want to share this, I'm going to shut up. A lot of people here, Black Lives Matter thinks, and the first they come back is All Lives Matter. We never said all lives don't matter. When you go to a breast cancer awareness, you don't go in there and say, colon cancer matters or prostate cancer. I'm going to leave. Prostate cancer matters. You're there for the matter of breast cancer. So I'm asking y'all to come out and hear this dialogue that we got. It's only an hour and a half. It's at the Waukegan Library. If anybody wants to fly, I'll give you a flyer. Thank you again, and thank you again, Commissioner McDowell. That was a good come up. I really appreciate that. I couldn't get in touch with nobody else.
Next?
The township. I heard they'll make announcement that they do help with crisis. I put them on the phone with them, and they still haven't reached out. But that's okay. She's okay. Somebody sent her a microwave through Amazon. She's doing all right.
Next on citizens' comments is Mr. W.C. Bremner from Zion.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Hill, honorable sirs, gentle lady, I am W.C. Bremner. I am here this evening as the chairman of the Committee for Boy Scout Troop 673. The troop is may possibly lose its regular meeting place. Boy Scouts are always prepared, so we took steps to try to find a new meeting place, including contacting the Zion Fire Department. This is item 9G on your agenda this evening. I have been advised in the last few minutes that we may not lose our meeting place. We don't know at this point. Therefore, I respectfully request, because it's too late to amend the agenda, that when you come to item 9G, that you table the item without discussion or vote for two weeks until the next meeting on 6 September. Until the next meeting on 6 September. I do thank you for your time, your courtesy, and your consideration of this matter.
Mr. Bremner, we may decide to take the item up anyway because the policy that we've been looking at, that they'll be, we'll be talking about tonight, was written in when? 1998. So I'm going to make a suggestion that we come up with a policy that isn't quite as cumbersome as the one that is before us tonight, and so we'll talk about it anyway, but we won't be talking about your group specifically.
Very good.
And I thank you for bringing a 1998 policy to our attention.
Again, sir, I do thank you for your time and your courtesy and your consideration of this matter.
Sure. Thank you. Item number six is the consent agenda. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Approval of minutes of a regular meeting held on August 2nd, 2016 at 7:00 p.m. Approval but not released of post-session minutes of a meeting held on August 2nd, 2016 at 7:40 p.m. Bills vouchers 124219 through 124340 drawn on First Merit Bank. Total $456,372.68.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item number seven is consider passing resolutions as follows. 7A is a resolution of commendation, 20-year service for Mark Klamut. Klamut, excuse me. I'm going to read this. It says, "Whereas Mark Klamut has completed 20 years of dedicated and loyal service to the city of Zion, and whereas," said Mark P. Klamut, "has not only won great admiration for his service to the Zion Fire Rescue Department from city officials and fellow employees, but from Zion residents whom he serves willingly and enthusiastically, and whereas it is the desire of the city council on behalf of the citizens of this community to express sincere and profound appreciation to Mark Klamut for giving generously of his time and efforts. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Zion extends to Mark P. Klamut its humble expression of esteem for serving faithfully and well, and extends its best wishes for continued employment, good health, success, and prosperity for many years to come. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be spread upon the minutes of the council and a suitable copy presented to him, dated at Zion, Illinois, the 16th day of August, 2016." Thank you. I need, is there a motion to, on the resolution for Mark?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 7B is a resolution of commendation, Zion Benton Township High School Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. Can I have the representatives stand up here for, while I'm reading this, please? Oh, and the students, too. Resolution of commendation. Whereas the Navy League of the United States sponsors awards annually recognizing the most outstanding Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, NJROTC, units in each of the 11 geographic regions of the country. From the 11 outstanding units, they select the most outstanding unit in the nation. NJROTC units are evaluated in many areas, including an annual inspection performed by the Navy, community and school service performed by cadets, academic achievement, performance of the drill and rifle teams, and overall administration of the unit. There are more than 600 NJROTC units competing for these awards. And whereas the Zion Benton Township High School, NJROTC, began in 1994 with 68 student cadets and now numbers more than 320 cadets. The ZBTHS unit has been a distinguished unit, being in the top 30% of the nation for the last 12 years. In the last eight years, 28 ZBTH NJROTC graduates received college ROTC scholarships, and numerous graduates enlist in all branches of the military to serve our country. The ZBTHS NJROTC rifle team has won the Navy National Championship for three consecutive years, and the ZBTHS NJROTC drill team has won the Area III Championship for seven consecutive years. NJROTC cadets performed more than 4,500 hours of community service in the 2015-2016 school year and provided color guards at numerous community events throughout the area. And whereas Zion Benton Township High School, NJROTC, was selected as the outstanding unit in Area III for the third consecutive year and the most outstanding unit in the nation, a first for ZBTH district. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Albert W. Hill, on behalf of the Zion City Council and the citizens of the city of Zion, commend Zion Benton Township High School, NJROTC, on their outstanding performance and meritorious achievements. Their success brings great pride to Zion Benton Township High School, the city of Zion, and its residents, dated the 16th day of August, 2016."
Mayor Hill, one short note. That run of excellence was over the past 20 years where they've been in the top 30% of the country.
How did I say?
Twelve.
Twelve. Oh. It's not even close. I just want to make, I guess, a couple of comments. My son-in-law graduated from Zion Benton High School in 1997. He went to the Naval Academy, graduated 2001. He's a Navy pilot right now, and it's only because of NJROTC that he has been successful. Thank you. And I want to commend all the kids in that program. You're doing something for yourself. You are opening up a future. You're opening doors for your future, and I commend everybody in the program for participating and doing that. So thank you all very much. Item number 7C. We need a motion. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
Yes. The other thing, Mayor, is that what you're doing for our community in showing the residents here, the young kids that are following behind you, that something special can be accomplished. There are a lot of us, Clyde McLemore was talking about, there are a lot of negative images of our city that aren't necessarily true, and a lot of times the things that are negative are always highlighted, whereas the positive things that happen within our community rarely get highlighted. So it's great, it's terrific for all of you and for representing our community the way in which you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 7C is authorizing participation in an intergovernmental agreement, by and between the city of Zion and various municipal and fire protection district fire departments for automatic fire rescue mutual aid per Chief Lewis.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, council members, this agreement actually exists in a non-formal way. So Chief Lewis and many of the other fire chiefs throughout the municipalities mentioned in the districts felt it better to stay aligned with the Mavis agreement that we have and formalize it. So that's what this agreement is about.
And this is basically a mutual aid agreement between?
Between Zion, Winter Parva, Newport, Beach Park, and Pleasant Prairie. It's what we've been operating in the last 10, 15 years. We just wanted to formalize it.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion and a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 8 is consider passing ordinance as follows. 8A is regarding the disposition of surplus property for Chief Dumian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and commissioners, you have your packet for request from Chief Dumian to liquidate the surplus vehicle, 1999 Chevy Cavalier red in color, last five would have been 10663 as surplus property through the Clinton Auto Auction, which is our through process.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9 is discussion authorization and approval. 9A is consider zoning dock at 16Z-11, requesting a special use permit to incorporate a full year entertainment complex to include escape rooms at 629 Street as petitioned by GPT Enterprises LLC per Director Ironson. Planning and zoning commission recommends approval.
Thank you, your honor commissioners. GPT Enterprises located at 629 Street, we seek an special use permit to incorporate a full year entertainment complex to include escape rooms. An escape room is a physical adventure game in which players are locked in a room and have to use elements of the room to solve a series of puzzles and escape within a set timeline. This room would be located in the southwest corner of the building, separate from the current seasonal attraction of Dungeons and Doom. Both the building and fire department have done preliminary reviews and have found no issues with the proposed plan. At the August 4th, 2016 planning and zoning meeting, the board voted to approve the special use permit.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Should I go missing? Look for me there.
I just have a question. Since they already have, since this is already zoned as an entertainment complex, why do we have to have it rezoned that way?
The special use only applies to the current attraction, so they need another special use for this entertainment.
Yeah, we're not changing the zoning. It's just a special use permit that works in this zoning area that applies to the Dungeons of Doom only.
So this is going to expand the use beyond what was previously?
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9B is request approval to purchase of an Intox ECIR desktop evidentiary unit and necessary supplies for the police department for Chief Dumian.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, on behalf of Chief Dumian, we're requesting the purchase of this item. The Illinois State Police has informed us that our current ventilizer unit will no longer be supported in the near term and it's needing immediate replacement. The cost of the unit with the necessary thermal paper is $6,914.60. That is a Illinois law enforcement price, so we are getting it at state price. It's not a budgeted item, but we're requesting that money be drawn from the 740 Agency Fund, which is a statute-specified fund specifically used for DUI enforcement, and we'd like to purchase that item out of that fund, please.
Is that funded in our budget?
It has its own independent budget, so it's not part of the general fund budget, but then there are funds available in that fund for, to cover the cost of this, plus the normal budgeted items in that fund.
We have enough money in there to cover this guy?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this purchase.
A motion?
Second.
And a second. For further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner McTeen?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9C, Stabilization of Bid and Financing Plan Approval, 2016 Ash Tree Removal Project per Director Colangelo.
Thank you, your honor. On July 26th, the city opened sealed bids for the removal of dead trees throughout the city. The city was divided into four sections with a base bid and three alternate bids. Staff feels due to the dangerous threat these trees pose to the general public that it would be in the best interest of the city and its residents that they all be removed citywide. Therefore, we are requesting and recommend that the city award the base bid and all alternate bids from the lowest responsible bidder, Homer Tree Service of Lockport, Illinois, in an amount of $306,620.
I believe this is a two-part motion. We've got, we want to award the bids, but we also want to talk about a financing plan, and Director Colangelo and Director Naval use their imagination, or yes, their imagination. And we have a, I think, a very, very dangerous situation throughout the city with these trees are deteriorating quickly, and Director Colangelo took myself and Commissioner Fryerson out, and we were looking at some of the trees, and we determined that we really need to do something quickly and do it as fast as we can and get them down as quickly as we can to avoid anybody getting hurt. Now, the issue is that it's a 300, I think originally we were talking, we thought it was going to be more than that, and it's my understanding that because there are so many bad trees, there are a lot of people out cutting trees, and the price is right right now.
Well, yeah, and that staff, our staff did, you know, originally we were in a $600,000 range a couple of years ago, but we've been able to take a lot of those out ourselves. But I firmly believe we will never see a price this good. Larger trees, for example, they're costing us, if we piecemeal, anywhere between $1,500 and $2,500 per tree to come down. This averages, because we have approximately 1,000 of them, inventory that are still out there, you know, we're averaging $300 a tree right now at this price.
And so Director Naval and Colangelo came up with the idea of seeing if we could finance this. We don't have $300,000 to pay somebody right now. We've been putting $50,000 per year in our budget, and there is a, Director Naval went out and there's some information, I believe, that you received tonight from Municipal Funding Solutions that they would finance this for us over a three-year period, where we would pay $336,000. So we would pay approximately $30,000 in interest over a three-year period. However, the $30,000, it's not all interest, there's about $8,500 in legal fees. Now, what we're asking is that if we approve the awarding of the contract to take the trees down, we'd like to have Director Naval approach the company that we're awarding the bid to and see if they would finance it for us over a three-year period. Yeah, I just wonder if there are other financing options besides this one.
Well, Director Naval?
Yeah, we, you know, when we wanted to go to bid for this, we got the quotes back, and we had to know what the amount was before we could look at financing, but we didn't want to wait on approving, getting those trees down, because the time is pretty crucial on the window for that. So I approached Municipal Funding, who's done a lot of our corporate leasing in the past, just to see if it was even an option, because there's no collateral, there's no real substance to the leasing. We would have to do what's called a debt certificate, which is where the legal fees are coming in. Basically, you're pledging future taxes as collateral, but you can pay those back over a period of time, installment period, versus like tax anticipation warrants, which have to be paid up in full in the next year. So they gave us a rate of just shy of 3.5%, I believe, on the quote, and said that they would, they gave us a quote saying that they would be able to finance this. So we had that as a kind of a top tier on the financing, worst-case scenario. That's our exposure. We're going to continue to look at other options to see if we can get lower rates, either through the contract or other means, but we wanted to be able to present our maximum exposure so that we can move forward with getting the trees down and know what our costs are going to be over the period of three years.
And what we're looking to do is that, I would want the motion to be that this would, this would be, we would look for other financing, but this would be no higher than this. This would be the limit that we would possibly go. We have, we've been budgeting $50,000 a year for trees, so we anticipated that we would continue to do that. So what we're short is about $62,000 per year. And one of the things that Director Naval and I have And one of the things that Director Naval and I have, have been following rather closely is the money that we're generating from the gaming. And the last two months, they've been about eight thousand dollars is what the city's received each month. So we're going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of ninety-six thousand dollars at the end of the year, and our proposal is that we would identify that source as a primary source for covering the, the trees. However, if we, if it, if the gaming money doesn't continue at that level, we're going to have to come up with something else. But I, but we're pretty confident that, that we will have this covered. And Director Colangelo, do you have something?
Yeah, I'd just like to add that, just so everyone's aware, this, in, in this bid price, it's the tree removal, the stump removal, and the restoration of the parkway. Once, so it's, you know, we're not going to be leaving stumps and holes all over the city. That's all part of this package. So even at the interest rate that he was talking at, now you're at three hundred thirty-six dollars per tree to remove. I don't, I don't know how you, yeah.
And could?
I'm going to have to get rid of them, obviously, but.
Can you explain how they do this, how they take the tree down, and how long it will take to get them all down?
Well, and we asked for their timeframe. Their timeframe on this quote was ninety-five working days, once we award, once we give them the notice to proceed. There's various ways they do this. Most likely what they're going to come in, or if they're going to, what they'll do is they'll limb the trees down and they'll run those through the chipper to save the limbs for, for mulching purposes. So basically, what's left is like a, like a totem pole, or, you know, like a telephone pole. Then they have a machine that grabs the top and takes the bottom, then they'll flip it sideways, and they'll lay it on the parkway, then they'll haul it away on flatbeds. And then another crew comes in right behind them, grinds a stump, and then one last crew comes in, black skirts, and sees where the tree was.
Make a motion that we approve the bid.
Second.
Do we need to do these both as one motion, or?
You can do separately if you want.
Okay, we have a motion to accept a bid of Home Tree Services of Lockport, Illinois of three hundred and six thousand six hundred twenty dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. And now we need a motion to approve the not-to-exceed financing, which would be?
So make a motion that we pursue financing over a three-year period not to exceed an interest rate of three point four.
Three point five six two eight seven, I think, isn't it? No, three point four. Which one is it, David? Is it three point four? Okay, never mind, three point four.
Yes.
You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion?
Director Colangelo, do, do these include the, the trees on the Carmo Boulevard?
The dead ones that are still standing up, yes.
Yeah, just curious.
Okay.
Couldn't resist that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Commissioner Frierson?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine D, stabulation of bids, two thousand sixteen sidewalk replacement project for Director Colangelo.
Thank you, Your Honor. Attach our, the bids for, excuse me, attach our bids for two thousand sixteen sidewalk replacement program. This project is funded through the street and bridge fund and eighty thousand, eighty thousand dollars of a community development block grant funding. I'd like to add that's now eighty-three thousand. The county had a request for some areas themselves. Staff requests and recommends awarding this project to the lowest responsible bidder, Whitney Moran Construction Company of Beach Park, Illinois, in an amount of one hundred seven thousand five hundred.
Is there a motion? A motion?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Clerk, please call the, oops, sorry.
Have sidewalks have been identified?
Yes, these are all in low, low income, low to moderate income. That's how, why they're eligible for funding.
Okay.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mr. Frierson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine E, consider approval of intergovernmental agreement between Beach Park, Winter Harbor, and Zion in passage of resolution authorizing execution for Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Back in April, we discussed the idea to promote more economic development in the area, not just in Zion, but regionally, kind of using the approach that together we present a stronger picture to retailers and developers as a tri-community region than we do just Zion alone, strictly due to population demographics. Half of our radius being in the lake, fish don't do a whole lot of shopping, we find out. Retailers basically look at the demographics and go, yeah, we want a higher population, we want X, we want Y. So what we did is we brainstormed with Beach Park and Winter Harbor and came up with an idea to, again, market the region and quit basically fighting over where retailers go as long as they come to the area. It benefits all of us, it brings jobs, it makes the area, brings more amenities to the area, brings more sales tax to the area. And the approach was that we would share in the costs associated with attracting this development, but we would also share in the benefits. So before you have a intergovernmental agreement between the three communities that, that spells out the terms, that staff sat down, brainstormed all the pros, cons, and kind of what we wanted to get in the agreement. I believe Beach Park has already passed this at their meeting, and this is before Winter Harbor tonight at their, their meeting as well. There's some general outlines of the terms that I put here. It's a three-year initial term. We have an agreement with Retail Strategies to follow this, but that three-year term matches the initial proposal that, of Retail Strategies. That's why it's, it's set at three years. We would share the cost proportionately based on population. We would establish an advisory board to administer the terms of the agreement. A proportional share of sales tax collected would be shared among each community as well, so regardless of where it goes, everyone receives some revenue from that. After the initial term in the agreement, there is an opt-out provision with a one-year notice and the revenue sharing for any qualifying development that will continue to be applicable for a period of twenty-four months following the date of the opt-out notification. The general concept behind that was, worst-case scenario, someone was going to be getting a big development in their area, and they decided, yeah, we don't want to share the revenue, and they decide to opt out. This covers even beyond the initial opt-out period for an additional period of two years, so that there's not really any benefit to them opting out of that and, and trying to kind of hoard that in. We want to make sure everyone had skied in the game on this and kept up a spirit of cooperation. So we put that, that provision in there. And then we also have a provision in there that should future partner communities want to be included, that we could include them in this. Should Wadsworth, anyone else want to kind of expand the region so that down the road we have a real kind of retail powerhouse in the area, we want to be able to expand this and grow as we see the successes. I would recommend that we approve this contingent on the approval of a contractual services agreement with Retail Strategies. Basically, we have this intergovernmental agreement. We're also going to have a proposal on the next item, kind of outlining what Retail Strategies will do for us. Upon approval of that, assuming that that's the case, we'll draft an entire agreement with Retail Strategies, outline what services they provide, what the terms are, that will come back to council at the next meeting. So we want to make sure that these are, we kind of have a chicken and the egg situation here. We want to make sure they're tied together.
Okay, and I'd just like to explain a little more. I think the Commissioners have all had an opportunity to look at the, at the information that they've had in front of them and, but for the, for the public, Zion has fifty-five percent of the population of the three communities, Winter Harbor has fifteen percent, and Beach Park has thirty percent. So that's, we're, we're hiring a consultant, and the cost for the consultant is, year one, it's eighty thousand dollars, year two and three, it's forty thousand dollars each year, for a total of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The cost of that will be divided up based on the population. Zion will pay fifty-five percent, Winter Harbor will pay fifteen percent, and Beach Park will pay thirty percent. The same applies, and when Director Naval was talking about the revenue that would come in, when business opens in our community, I believe they, what's the sales, what's the state sales tax now?
It's one percent sales tax.
And that's what we?
Well, that's, that's our share of it.
Right. I think it's seven percent sales tax is what we pay. The city gets one percent. So it, when, if something comes into Zion, Zion will keep fifty-five percent of the sales tax, Winter Harbor will get fifteen percent, Beach Park will get thirty percent. If something goes into Beach Park, Zion will get fifty-five percent of their sales tax, Winter Harbor will get fifteen, and Beach Park will get thirty. And the same applies to, if a business goes into Winter Harbor, we'll get fifty-five percent. So we're sharing the cost of it, and we're also sharing potential revenue. And as Director Naval was pointing out, that much of the issue that we run into when we're talking with businesses is they'll look at Zion and look at Zion alone, and they'll say, well, you're too small, we need a population of fifty thousand or fifty-five thousand or thirty thousand or whatever it is, and your demographics aren't high enough for income. Well, if we can include Beach Park and, and Winter Harbor in this, it raises everybody up, and it, it, it just expands the market that the retails, retailers are pursuing. So that's why, that's where this came from, and I think it's, I think it's a great idea. I am particularly pleased that there is a, there seems to be a, a real cooperative effort between the villages and the city of Zion, Winter Harbor, Beach Park, and Zion. And I think that that's somewhat new, and I want to commend the, all the department heads because they're the ones that are behind this, whether it's building inspections that we've cooperated with Beach Park, or consolidating nine-one-one that we're talking about, or consolidating the fire and rescue departments. There's a lot of things that are going on that I'm happy to see happening among the three villages, and I think this is a, another good idea. So are there, do we have a motion first?
Move that we accept this intergovernmental agreement.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion.
Just a couple of questions. So any incentives that Beach Park, for example, would offer? Those incentives are recouped by Beach Park prior to the fifty-five percent?
Correct. We did put a provision in here that if, to attract a business to here, to Winter Harbor, whatever, if they have to offer a sales tax incentive as part of that, that comes, that goes off of the amount before you allocate it out. If there were any TIF incentives, however, that is not included in here because any property taxes that are generated by the business are going to go to the community where it's in. So any TIF will be a hundred percent paid for by the community, but they'll be receiving a hundred percent of that tax base as well. So this only relates to sales tax incentives.
And any cost in developing a property, is that, does that also come out of, goes back to the community or, or not?
I believe there's a provision in here, I'll have to double-check that, but I believe it includes development costs as well.
What, this is what I'm getting at. So the funds that we put into developing Trumpet Park, would that be considered if we got some light manufacturing to come into Trumpet Park, or is that already grandfathered or respent and it's not considered?
That, that would not be considered.
So this is, this would be new development?
This is new, this is new development. And Trumpet Park, I mean, we don't know what it'll end up being out there, but that's currently being marketed primarily as industrial. There's not a whole lot of retail incentives out that would be coming out of something like that, and this is more geared towards retail rather than industrial or general commercial. But in it, the incentives really, the allocation and the offset of cost really relates to the sales tax.
Okay.
Are there any existing projects that have been set aside already?
That's, we're going to sit down, the advisory committee, once this is approved, is going to sit down and basically determine existing projects, because any existing projects, it's a twofold answer, so I'm going to address them both. Any existing projects, for example, if we've been working on something with a developer, Beach Park, Winter Harbor, those would be agreed to by the advisory committee saying, what you've already got in place is not going to be subject to this if something gets built now. Only items that come out of Retail Strategies Initiative, which is, the costs are being shared for, are what are going to be subject to this, and we won't have any results from that until we engage them.
And Director Naval, would you just refresh my memory here? If, if somebody opts out after there's a project in, how long is the sales tax money divided up among the three communities?
The sales tax allocation is for a ten-year period from the date of occupancy.
Okay, so it, Commissioner McDowell's question sparked a question in my mind. It would not be possible for somebody to give, like, three years of all the sales tax money back, and then as soon as they get that deal to opt out, and then at the end of three years, keep all the sales tax money?
No.
Okay, that would, that would still be extended for a ten-year period. Okay.
Well, the opt-out only commits them for an additional twenty-four months, right?
You require a one-year notification to opt out, but then after that opt, once you're out, any development that comes within the next two years is still retroactively subject to the terms of the agreement. But there's also a provision saying the amount of sales tax allocation is for a ten-year period. So once it goes in, that sales tax sharing happens for the next ten years.
Yeah, okay.
Is there further discussion?
We do have, we do have a motion and a second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Deteen?
Aye.
Mr. Frierson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item nine F is considered proposal submitted by Retail Strategies for retail recruitment and analytics to attract businesses to the region per Director Naval.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We discussed this a little bit in the intergovernmental agreement item, but Retail Strategies is a firm that basically goes out and markets to retailers on our behalf. We're contracting with them to come in, they do inventory of all the sites in the region, Beach Park, Winter Harbor, Zion, because they'd be contracting with all three of us, look at the potential of the sites, try and find good matches for retail developers. They have a whole network nationally of, of contacts, and they know what they're looking for specifically, so they can match up and make the contact on our behalf with us to market to them. And those retailers know Retail Strategies, so when something comes from them saying this is a fit for, for your development, it holds a lot more weight than Zion coming along and saying, hey, we're a fit for you. So they, we looked at a couple of different firms over the past year, actually, and they really stood out to us because it's more than just a metrics, here's, here's a report, go, good luck with it. They actually go out and do work on our behalf, contact, set up the meetings. They look at things from west side of the street versus east side of the street, because they look at daytime traffic, and they say, somebody who, you know, a Panera who relies on maybe a breakfast crowd wants to be on this side of the street because traffic flow is heavier in the mornings on that part. So it's, they drill down to really the details of a community. They also are going to look at our comprehensive plan and make sure that things align there. They're also going to work with Winter Harbor on their plan as well. And they're, they're real excited to work with us on this. They, they thought the, the regional approach was, was an innovative idea. Typically, they don't work with partner communities because they want to make sure that there's no conflict of interest. If they were representing Beach Park, they couldn't represent Zion because they'd be fighting against themselves, but when we approached them with this idea, they, they wished more areas were doing this. It makes it a lot easier to market to a retailer when you have a cooperative effort rather than everyone kind of competing. So they think that it'll, that'll be an additional feather in their cap for attracting developers to the area. You already discussed the cost of it. I believe it was a hundred and seventy-five thousand over the three-year period, to be shared, a hundred and sixty thousand, I'm sorry, over the three-year period, to be shared as detailed in the intergovernmental agreement. We recommend approval of the proposal, and then we'll draft an agreement for the actual scope of services.
And this is covered in our budget?
And this is covered in their budget?
It is.
So is there any sort of opt-out as time transitions over that three-year period if you're not liking what you're seeing?
The three years is a firm commitment, primarily because it takes that long to, you know, if you try and get a lead from someone, it takes two to three years before you see, you know, that develop. And then their hope is that we have a long-term relationship, and they continue to represent us going forward, so they're obviously looking for successes because they want a long-term, they don't want just a three-year contract. We've met with a lot of their clients as well and discussed successes that others have had in similar communities to ours. They represent large and small, but the three-year term is a fixed initial term.
So once the leads come in, what's that handoff look like?
Basically, they provide the, like I said, the demographics, the fit, all the information that they gathered, the site information, they arrange the contact, the meetings, and then it comes to the advisory group to then present, basically kind of close the deal.
Are they advising on incentives as well based on our particular situation here in Illinois?
They're aware of what tools we have available to us, but ultimately, that's going to probably be between us and the developer as what's necessary to be able to attract them. But Retail Strategies does know the gap differentials of, you know, challenges in Illinois versus Wisconsin and things like that, and they'll know what is going to be needed to make that up.
Okay. And then is there an appetite for staff to sit in this position, like permanently? This is a three-year period, but-
Correct.
Beyond that, I mean, have we kind of assessed the cost of what it would take to bring in personnel for this on a permanent basis?
You're talking like an economic development director or something like that?
More or less, I mean, or just more staff to be able to help with some of the marketing and the intensity of, you know, getting development into the community.
Yeah, I mean, the reason we're going this route is because we're basically contracting out that piece for now because, you know, with our taxes and things like that, to hire full-time economic directors, for the cost versus benefit, it'd be very difficult. Plus, this is their expertise, they've already established that. As, we're going to, we're going to make do with what we have staff-wise right now because we don't really have a whole lot of options. If we start seeing proof be generated from this, then that'll have to be a discussion with council if that, if that burden becomes pretty cumbersome, but it's generating, you know, positive outcomes, then we'll have to discuss that at that time.
Is there a motion? You have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there further discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Mr. Fryerson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. Item 9G is consider use of city property request per Chief Lewis, and as we talked with Mr. Bremner during the public comments, this particular request will not be taken up, but you have a copy of the policy for utilizing city land and buildings, and I think, to me, it appears to be very, very cumbersome, requiring the approval of the commissioner of public property, approval of the commissioner of the department using the building, and approval of the city council on the consent agenda. And I'm going to suggest that the department heads sit down and come up with a policy that is less cumbersome and allows the individual department heads to make the decision and give the approval for public use of buildings and land and not require somebody to come before the city council every time they want to do this.
Do we need a motion for that, or can we just-
I don't think so. I think we just table this and give the direction to the department heads to come up with a policy that covers all of that. And there might, I mean, there are, there are going to be some facilities that can be used more than others, and some facilities can't be used at all, but that, I think that would be up to them, and they can do that. And Mr. Bremner, if there's another request and we don't have a policy in place, just bring it back and we'll take care of yours on its own. Item 9H is consider approval of policies for Citizens United for a Better Zion, and that acronym comes out of Cubs. And I'm a White Sox fan, so this hurts me to have that name.
I'd just like to say that this was, this name came from, directly from Mayor Hill.
Cubs. It still pains me. I want to, I'm going to read some things. What we've done here in, Commissioner McDowell, Commissioner Fryerson, were very involved in this process, and we had a slight hiccup in our process when Commissioner Fryerson was appointed to the city council because we, all three couldn't be at these meetings, so. But what we have is, we're putting together an advisory group. We've been working on this for approximately a year. We had guidance from the Department of Justice coming out and working with us, and we think that we have a good outline, and I would like to get the governance of this group approved tonight, and then I will appoint people to the committee at the next city council meeting. I'll put letters out. I wanted to get this approved before we actually appointed anybody. I didn't want to appoint somebody to a committee that would not be approved. So I'm going to read some things that are, that are, I think, important, and hopefully people will understand what we're trying to do here. The citizens, the mission statement, Citizens United for a Better Zion, Cubs, is established to study and review issues related to the operation of the city and residents concerned affecting the health, public safety, social and economic quality of life of Zion residents. The committee will make recommendations to the council on actions that may be commenced to justify and impartially resolve the specific issues for all citizens of Zion. The committee is also empowered to meet with members of the community to bridge gaps in communications that may affect the residents in times of crisis by clearly gathering and conveying information as deemed appropriate and necessary to ensure a positive, strong, and healthy partnership exists between the city officials and the residents of Zion. The purpose: Cubs serve to facilitate the involvement of residents representing neighborhoods from each of Zion precincts, numbers 403 to 415, in the continual efforts at strengthening our community. The citizens will work to enhance communications between the community and the city government, educate residents about the process of expressing concern to Cubs, enhance communication among residents of the city and across cultural lines to facilitate a better understanding and encourage closer relationships among the citizenry, strengthen and promote community policing programs, make recommendations to the city council structural processes, evaluate city relations with wider community, with the wider community, and suggest changes in city policies, procedures, and practices aimed at improving these relationships. Cubs shall exist in each of the 13 precincts of Zion, and each precinct will have diverse community representations. Cubs may create a steering committee of at least three residents from each precinct nominated by the initial steering committee. At least three residents in each precinct shall be nominated by the initial steering committee and then by residents in each of the 13 precincts. Qualifications for membership: qualifications must be a legal resident or community leader of the Zion precinct. Members are persons who have demonstrated a commitment to the purposes for which the commission is created, be able to submit two-character references documenting five years, does not have a felony conviction in the last five years, must have no outstanding legal warrants, and every designee is expected to attend the required Cubs training in their earliest opportunity. The rest of it goes on to explain the officers and the structure of the organization and voting and a number of things like that, but I also want to talk about the vision of what this organization is trying to do. The Cubs' vision of the future is to provide a safe city where every citizen can walk down any street in any neighborhood and feel secure, a city where businesses thrive and every person feels like they have an opportunity to prosper, a city whose housing stock is clean and maintained in a way that benefits everyone's property values, a city where alternative revenue sources will allow for lower real estate taxes for all, a city that provides quality-of-life opportunities in health, wellness, recreation, education, and access to the lakefront, a city where every person feels like they are part of a tapestry that is the city of Zion, and that tapestry is woven through respect, responsibility, integrity, cooperation, safety, and kindness. By accepting a role as a Cubs representative, the precinct representatives are committing to actively work to improve the precinct in which he or she resides. Aside from, aside from attending Cubs meetings and sharing information, the representative also agrees to find creative ways to enhance their precinct and engage others in work to improve condition. This includes crime. Work with police to address specific situation. Help build relationships between police department and residents in your precinct. In time of crisis, gather and convey accurate information between city officials and residents of Zion. Housing: work with city agencies to address specific situations. Encourage residents to take pride in their property and modeling what that looks like. Advocate, advocate on behalf of neighbors to have foreclothes and abandoned homes taken care of. Economy: consider shopping local for items that can be found in the community and encourage other residents to do the same. Economic Development: offer suggestions on ways to improve economic development. Encourage investment, business development, and employment to promote growth and sustainability. Planning: participate in focus groups that seek feedback on community planning. Recommend changes to city policies and procedures that will improve community-wide communications and work to improve community-wide engagement in activities and discussions that foster greater trust and understanding between different neighborhoods in the city. Education: engage with the school districts represented by your precinct and find ways to encourage and support education in your precinct and support the efforts of schools and library. And that's basically what the organization is intending to do. We tried to take a broad view of this and get people involved from all over the city on a wide variety of issues that we think are, need to be addressed as part of the city, and I want to, before we have a motion, I want to thank the people who, there were a lot of long, and if you've ever put together bylaws for an organization, you know how tedious and boring that can be, and this was tedious and boring, and there were a lot of meetings over about a year. And I'd just like to thank Bishop James Logan, Sherry Neal, Dave Fermant, Ginny Adams, Linda Sandoval, Madeline Santana, March Taylor, Mike McDowell, Pastor Doug Carlson, Commissioner Fryerson, Steve Dumian, Donna Cole, and Jerome Cole for helping put all of this together. And I would entertain a motion to approve the structure of the community, Citizens United for a Better Zion, Cubs.
I make a motion that we approve the policies for Citizens United for a Better Zion.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion?
There's also forming a city commission when we approve this, or is that another step?
I think this is basically forming the city commission, and I will come back to the council with the, these people will be appointed, and you have to approve the appointments.
Okay. Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye. And I just want to thank particularly Commissioner McDowell and Commissioner Fryerson for all their work and input, and Supervisor Neal also, and thank you very much. Departmental commentary, does anybody have anything? Director Clanson?
Yeah, I'd just like to, on behalf of the Public Works Department, just thank the council for approving the tree removal project. It's been ongoing for three years, and I would be remiss if I didn't give kudos to Chris Nicken. He works on our engineering department, and this young man, single-handedly did the bid specifications and inventory and measured every one of these trees throughout the city. Much appreciated.
Kudos to him. Item number 11 is announcements. Thursdays through September 29th from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., the Zion's Farmers Market at Sheridan Road and Shiloh Boulevard. September 3rd at 6:30 p.m. is the Zion Queen's Pageant, and that is where? Yikes.
The ban shelf.
Set the ban shelf. Thank you. September 4th, 8:15 p.m. is the Jubilee Day's fireworks. September 5th at 8:00 a.m. is the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, which is out at the high school. At 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. is Jubilee Day's Arts and Crafts Festival on Emes Avenue and 25th Street at 1:00 p.m. and the Jubilee Day's Parade. And I want to again remind people that the Jubilee Day's Parade route has changed. The parade steps off as always from Shiloh Boulevard to Emes, heads north to 23rd Street, it turns east on 23rd to Sheridan Road, and south on Sheridan Road, ending at 29th Street. Sheridan Road from 29th to 31st Street will be closed for parade dispersment. And on September 6th at 7:00 p.m., there's a Zion City Council meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Item 12 is adjournment.
So move.
We have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And a second. Is there discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Commissioner McKinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Dettin?
Aye.
Commissioner Fryerson?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Aye.
Mayor Hill?
Aye.
Aye.